Good evening. I see that we are at 7 o'clock and I call the January 9th, 2024, regular meeting of the City of Ashland Planning Commission to order. The Ashland Planning Commission conducts in-person regular meetings. However, the opportunity to participate electronically is also available and can be accessed via Zoom pursuant to state law as well as viewing it on RV TV. The public can find information on how to participate in Planning Commission meetings in our public notices. Directions on how to find the complete meeting materials, applications and staff reports on the city's websites are also included in our public notices. If you wish to speak tonight about a topic not on tonight's agenda, please fill out a speaker request, the pink sheet there in the back of the room, and you'll be recognized by the chair during the public forum portion of tonight's agenda and can provide your public comments then. If you're speaking about a topic on tonight's agenda, same form gets filled out from the back of the room. You'll be recognized by the chair during the public comments portion or depending upon who you are, a different portion of that agenda item as we review it tonight. So I note that we have six of seven members present. We have a quorum and we can proceed with the meeting. Brandon, any announcements?
So one announcement I'd like to make is that the City of Ashland's annual town hall will be taking place on January 24th from 5:30 to 7:30 at the Rogue River Room with SOU campus. And so this meeting is an annual meeting in which the mayor provides a state of the city address as well as an opportunity to award volunteers within our community through the award of both the 2023 Raglan Award and the 2023 Alan C. Bates Award. So that's something to look forward to and you're all invited. That's my announcement. That's it.
Simple. Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda, approval of the minutes from the December 12th, 2023 study session. Are there any questions, changes that anyone wishes to bring up to the minutes?
I'll move to approve.
Have a movement, second?
I'll second.
One punctuation error on page seven.
Go ahead.
Due to the area apostrophe S on the last paragraph.
Moving the apostrophe, does that change the motion to approve? All right. Minutes are approved. Moving on to public forum. I have a single name, Michael, to speak in public forum tonight. Okay, that is going to be... Mr. James Gerard would like to speak and if you would come forward. Get to the dais there. Take your time, sir.
I have to admit, I'm a bit surprised that you don't say the pledge of allegiance at the beginning of a public meeting. That's the first time I've been in a public meeting where that hasn't occurred. Who, do you have any idea who I would petition to to see that the pledge of allegiance to that flag back there is stated at these meetings? Because believe it or not, that's what we're here to protect. Any idea who, city council? Is that...
It has not been standard that the Planning Commission has done the pledge of allegiance in the way the city council has done.
Oh, okay, but you're right. Hello. I believe that I've not had the opportunity to meet any of you. I've taken time to familiarize myself with the work and perspectives of many of you. Some of the information I've read is on the matter of a local housing developer's commitments to provide building lots for affordable housing at no cost within the city of Ashland. This change in availability of affordable housing has been in local news reports as well. I address you today regarding an oversight on my part. In a recent document I mailed to each of you on October 30th, inaccurate information was unfortunately included. I take full responsibility for this oversight. The document in question inadvertently contained inaccuracies related to a local housing developer's commitment to provide building lots for affordable housing at no cost. The clerical error was an attribution of whom would receive the developer's demanded payments. The acting city attorney recognized this clerical error in an email of November 6th. This statement of clerical error by the acting city attorney was available to each of you prior to the November 14th meeting of the commission. I apologize for this clerical error and regret the hardship some of you took to this error in document preparation. I have learned from the error. Moving forward, I will implement stronger quality control measures to ensure something like this does not happen again. Please know that I have considerable respect for the work of this commission and I am deeply sorry that my mistake detracted from that. I have submitted my written apology to the chairwoman of this commission and the city recorder. I kindly request that my apology for this clerical error be entered into the public record for the commission along with supporting documents and a request that the error be corrected in official public documents from past meetings. I give this apology to each of you. I sincerely hope that you receive this apology in the spirit it has given. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, doesn't work. No other submissions, Michael, for Zoom or otherwise?
No.
Okay, so we can close the public forum. Moving on to unfinished business. Unfinished business we have tonight is going to be the approval of the findings for PAT 2, 2023, triple zero four four, which is the development application for A22 Oak Street. So before we begin the hearing on this piece of unfinished business, I'll ask commissioners if you have any ex parte contact or done any site visits in the interim. Mr. Herron.
No ex parte. I did have a site visit.
Commissioner McCracken, Jane.
Is the question specifically to this unfinished business or in general for the agenda tonight?
Since we considered the business and moving towards today, so in the interim, for A22 Oak Street.
On this specific one?
Yes.
No ex parte.
Mr. Perkins.
No ex parte, no site visit.
Mr. Phillips.
No ex parte, no site visit.
And myself, Commissioner Nowitzki. No, no ex parte, no site visits on this. So I'm not aware of any challenges for bias.
Kerry hasn't had any ex parte or site visit.
Miss Ken Karen?
Nothing.
Skip right over you. Thank you. I hadn't promised that it wouldn't be a little rough, you know, going through it the first time.
It's fine, I'll jump in, don't worry.
I am not aware of any challenges for bias, prejudgment or personal interest on this action, so I open the floor for a discussion of the findings. Is there any discussion, issue, changes to be made to the findings?
I have no suggested changes to the findings or the recommendation from staff.
Mr. Phillips.
Just have a quick question. Section 2.2, just wanted to make sure the dates of April 17th, 2023 and April 25th, 2023 are correct.
No, that's clearly a typo, thank you. Oh, wait, pardon me. Deemed complete? Yes, you know, I believe this is correct. There was a long period of incompleteness with this application, which is why I believe for that range of date from the April... No, that must be incorrect.
We can verify the date from the date of the mailing of when the notice of complete went to the neighbors modify the findings to reflect that date. If it is April 17th and April 25th respectively, there won't be any changes. But if we do find that it was noticed subsequent to that, we'll go ahead and make that change. As well as the copy in your packet identifies tonight's date as January 9th, 2023, we will change that to 2024.
It's hard.
Thanks, Brandon.
Hi, Miss. Any other corrections or adjustments? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve findings for this piece on A22 Oak Street?
We don't yet.
We don't yet.
I would move to approve the findings as proposed.
Do we have a second? Sure.
With amendments to dates as needed.
With amendments to dates as needed.
Thank you.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion of the motion? Thank you, roll call vote, Michael.
Mr. Herron?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner McCracken, Jane?
Yes.
Mr. Ken Karen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nowitzki?
Yes. Motion passes. Moving on. We're going to go into type two public hearings now, type two hearing, in type two hearings. Decisions are made by the Planning Commission after this public hearing. Decision may be appealed to the city council. We'll be reviewing three actions tonight under type two and we're going to start with finding action PAT 2, 2023, triple zero forty-five. Subject property, 765 Cambridge Street. Applicant, Alan and Judith Harper. Description being a request for site design review, outline and final plan approval of a four-unit cottage housing development and performance standard subdivision. Application includes a request for an exception to street standards, specifically not to install a sidewalk along Cambridge Street. This is comprehensive plan designation R15 zoning, single-family residential, accessors map 391E05AD and tax lot 101. Before we begin, the same questions, I'll ask the commissioners if you've had any ex parte contact or done site visits. Commissioner Herron.
No ex parte, no site visit.
Commissioner Ken Karen?
No site visit. I have in the past had those, you know, social engagements with the applicant, but through Rotary, but there's nothing that would weigh on what my decision making tonight.
No discussion of the project?
No, I didn't know it was coming.
Commissioner McCracken, Jane?
No ex parte, no site visit. Similar to Commissioner Ken Karen, I am acquainted with the applicant through Rotary, but no discussion of the project.
Mr. Perkins?
No ex parte, no site visit.
Mr. Phillips?
No ex parte, no site visit.
Commissioner Nowitzki? No ex parte, but I did visit the site in order to familiarize myself with what was happening on the property and that was just yesterday. So I'm not aware of any challenges for bias, prejudgment or personal interest in this action, so I will open up the public hearing and staff. Aaron, can you make a presentation, please?
More than happy to. Pleasure to be before you again, Planning Commission and Chair Nowitzki. Before I begin, I just want to address one item. I believe this must have been in your prepared script because I heard the tax number that you provided was AD 101 and the tax lot is O5 BD 1100. So was that just perhaps carried over from your script? It's in the notice.
Right here.
It's on the notice.
It's on the notice. I copied from that.
Yeah, so the notice is wrong.
What would be the correct one one more time?
Sure, this is before you hear, it's O5 BD tax lot 1100 and the street address is 765 Cambridge. I don't have an explanation for why I was incorrect on the notice. I believe that error would be remedied by it being discussed at this point.
Sure.
As you pointed out at the outset, this is a request for an outline and final plan subdivision for a five-lot, four-cottage subdivision and an exception to the street standards. In staff's analysis of this, the exception to the street standard is probably not warranted and we've recommended and brought prepared findings for you, recommending denial in part to that exception, which I'll discuss in more detail through the presentation. In the present application, the applicant provided detailed findings formatted in a manner similar to city documents. So in pages 79 to 87 was there the application materials. And as Chair Nowitzki pointed out, there was language in there talking about findings approving the exception. And the pages that are in your packet from 57 to 73 are largely those, the work product of the applicant, but amended to recommend denial of the exception in part.
Aaron, I'd like to just interject real fast, just so people understand. In the preparation meeting today, we had this discussion, which is why this came up.
And it's typically, this is not common for an applicant to bring us a document that is prepared in such detail. But in this case, the applicant is a land use attorney and was looking to ease the burden on staff. This is the subject property. It is at the southeast corner of Nevada and Cambridge and is currently developed with a single-family home. This is closer up with north oriented to your left and you can see that along the Cambridge frontage there, there is no sidewalk, but curb-tight sidewalk is present along Nevada. This is the proposed site plan showing that the house will be split into a duplex, making the first two cottages and that cottages three and four would be two new structures to the south of the existing house. The applicant includes a clear site plan showing that the application meets all required setbacks, including 10 feet to the south, which is the parent parcel's rear yard setback, lot coverage and all the other relevant standards. Now, for the purpose of those who might be watching on TV or aren't familiar, R15 zoning is traditionally been known as single-family zoning. In 2017, the city adopted standards to allow the development of small cottages pursuant to limitations in FAR, which is Florida area ratio, and limiting the cottages in size so that no more than 75% of the cottages could exceed 800 square feet and that cottages are limited based on the size of the parcel. I believe we have so far approved four cottage developments. Two of them were the largest possible, the ones being on Laurel and again on Coffee. And there have been two smaller ones that have gotten less attention. One on Oak Street, partly because the infrastructure got done and it hasn't finished being built out yet. Pardon me, that was also a four cottage development around an existing home. And there was another one on Tolman, but this would be the fifth that has been approved through this section of the ordinance. The standards here provide those values on the previous page, showing that it meets the allowed density and that the total development of the four cottages is less than the allowed Florida area ratio. Now, in an effort not to steal the applicant's thunder too much, I've only used a couple of their rendering for the purposes of this presentation and this is showing you the existing home and the two new proposed cottages with lofts to the south side of the existing home. And here's a street elevation showing the one behind the other. With regard to street standards, the present improvement is 47 feet of right-of-way with paving 33 feet from curb to curb on Cambridge. And what's before you here are the standards for neighborhood streets with either parking on one side and parking on both sides. And staff feels that when considering the existing dedicated right-of-way width and the existing curb location, that granting an exception to the requirement for a park row is very likely warranted. And so the findings that we prepared for you suggest allowing the exception in part by granting relief from the requirement for a park row. But the findings discuss, there's three different places in the findings where sidewalk comes up by virtue of transportation in the city facilities and the outline plan. And then again, transportation facilities being discussed in site design review. So there's three different places where they're discussed in the findings. And in each place, what I've included is findings requiring a five-foot curb-tight sidewalk. This is showing the existing improvements along Cambridge there and the existing curb cut. Obviously, there is some mature vegetation that will be affected by that decision. But in staff's thought process, considering the existing pedestrian connection along the northern part of the property, if, you know, a cottage development is not going to give us the opportunity to get that extension of sidewalk down Cambridge, when else would we? And then this is more information on the requirements of the street standards. This is the approval criteria for street standards. In short, you really have to show that it's, that you can't do it or that if there isn't a demonstrable difficulty, that what you're providing is superior than the standard. And based on the information in the record and the physical state of the site, staff felt that a reasonable request would be to include sidewalk down the frontage, but again, relief from the park row. This is a recent survey that was conducted of the property. You can see that the fence there on the southern part of the property is being shown to be about three and a half feet in from the property line. Depending on where that pin is set, it's reasonable to presume that a five-foot sidewalk would be affecting that existing improvement. But again, it does seem reasonable based on the proposed development. And that's the conclusion of my presentation. I'm more than happy to field any questions on anything that may have gone over too quickly.
Questions from the commissioners? I have one, just clarify for me. Your last point, I didn't quite follow, the setting of the pin versus the width of the sidewalk one more time?
Sure, so this is the survey of the property. It's generally safe to assume that the location that's being shown here for that property pin is set some distance behind the curb, but where exactly, that's unclear. But this is simply showing that it's three feet seven from the pin to the fence. So there is a chance that a five-foot sidewalk may not disturb that fence depending on how far easterly of the existing curb the property line actually falls.
Okay.
So you're saying that they may not have to take the fence down and do we care?
It's possible that they may not, that it may not be effective. Right.
Yeah, I mean, I don't see why we would care.
I just, it was information that was available, I thought I'd pointed out.
Okay.
Good to know.
I have one question. So if I read correctly, the applicant's position was that the sidewalk that would feed through the property would serve as access?
I'm certain that the applicant will develop his argument further for you. But yeah, the case that I believe he was making was that the general character of the neighborhood lacks those pedestrian facilities and that the pedestrian connection going onto the property, which would have been required by site design standards.
So the rest of my question was, why did that not seem adequate to the planning department?
Well, would you prefer to answer? I'm more than happy to. It provides a different service. The pedestrian connectivity into the development and to the proposed dwellings is a requirement of site design review, separate and apart from the public facilities. And so it's not providing the same part of a multimodal transport network by having pedestrian connectivity up to Nevada. Now, a counter to that, I suppose, is won't it be a long time until that then continues? And that's possible, but we need to get these opportunities where we can.
Well, and the City of Ashland's transportation goals are that all neighborhoods would have sidewalks on the, you know, that there'd be sidewalks on all streets with park rows. So curb tight is already a lessening of the standard.
But when considering the paved width, because if instead this body were to say, well, let's hew closer to the standards, you would be creating a situation where potentially you would be suggesting that the existing curb line move westerly and that would really affect, if you can imagine, for example, having this curb line scooch into the roadway so that the applicant could provide both a park row and a sidewalk. And which is why the findings, as they've been crafted, are granting relief from the park row requirement, but not for the requirement for the sidewalk.
Okay, thank you.
I would add one simple clarification. As the internal sidewalk serving the units on the private property would not be publicly accessible, whereas a sidewalk within the public right-of-way would be available to anybody in the neighborhood.
Any other questions? Thank you, Aaron.
I saw a statement to the contrary in here.
There is the potential, and again, the applicant can speak to it.
Okay, maybe I'm misreading.
There are cases where public pedestrian easements have been assigned on private property to gain public access through a private parcel. But nonetheless, as drawn on the site plan, the sidewalks internal are not in public property.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Harper?
Good evening, yes.
Good evening.
Alan Harper, residence is 651 Walnut here in town. Thank you for your time, for volunteering your time. I know how tough this can be and what a great contribution it is. Not a lot to add, just a little bit of the background. Staff has been great to work with. I think Derek and I have been talking about this for four years, long time, pre-COVID, pre-inflation spikes in materials. I was lucky enough to be sitting on Planning Commission when we approved those first cottage housing ones, the one on Oak. I didn't realize it was still getting built, I figured it had been done by now. But I'm a huge fan of this idea. You know, when we approved those first couple of projects, the idea that you can do some creative infill, but do them as building pads. You know, we've done a lot of PUD kind of projects all over the valley where you create building pads and you have common area. And it's just a great way to make space and to create flexible living situations. So it was really exciting to work through those first cottage housing applications. And it was something that I always wanted to try and do. I think it's a great opportunity to do some of the missing middle housing inventory that we don't have, that we talk about and try and figure out. So, you know, we knew we wanted to try and do this. We'd been, I'd been working with the statute, you know, in those early applications. But then it just took a long time to get to this point with the inflation and the opportunity to do it. And then the interesting piece of not having to do parking. In one of our first, you know, kind of packages that Derek and I worked up where that front cottage is, was just going to be more paving. You know, I don't know if you saw on the slide, we used to have an RV, which our kids are too old, we sold now. I still have that Volkswagen bus that was in the picture, the '70 Volkswagen that I'm never getting rid of. But there's a curb cut there to the back and so originally that was going to be just more paving. So it was really exciting to see the climate-friendly initiative come through at the state level and now have the opportunity to not do more paving and really embrace street parking, mass transit, modal transit. It's going to be an interesting bag. There's no guarantee this is actually going to work out very well for us. Talking to real estate folks and appraisers, nobody is willing to give me a number for how is it going to work trying to sell a tiny infill cottage with no parking. It just doesn't exist, there just isn't any inventory. But I think it's inventory that we really need. You know, this kind of infill, this kind of cottage, build it with bike parking, build it with a, you know, storage and private space for that kind of access in a flat neighborhood, you know, where I think you can get to Helman, you can get into town, Nevada connects to Oak. It could be a really exciting project, but nobody knows how this is really going to work out or what the price points are going to be, so it's a tough budget to put together. But I'm a big fan that, of this idea that, you know, these four units, this four, you know, the four cottages of ownership can have one barbecue and one fire pit. know, the four cottages of ownership can have one barbecue and one fire pit and one set of gardening tools, rather than we all need one of our own. I just, I think that's a real exciting concept. So we're happy to try and do it. We're excited to get to this point. Happy to answer any questions. The street exception really started when Derek and I had really talked about this in the beginning, we were just going to defer it like an LID. I mean, I have no problem building out a sidewalk and putting it in the CCNRs and building it if this ever gets built. But really, we're just adding to the cost of the development and adding to the cost of units when we, as a community, as a planning commission, as staff, put these conditions on that don't add value, and they're not going to go anywhere. But I totally understand, you know, that this is what we do in land use. We chunk it and we get the entitlements when we can. We get street dedications when we can. We get public improvements when we can. But I thought what we originally talked about, which is doing this as an LID or some sort of deferred improvement, because if we're going to build out sidewalks along Cambridge, absolutely for it. A lot of people walk it. It's a sleepy little street that doesn't go anywhere, which is kind of cool. So we thought that was a good solution, you know, but if this commission really thinks that the sidewalk is needed there, we'll certainly build it. It's not going to kill this project. But we thought an LID or an exception to the standard made more sense.
Great. Thank you. Questions from commissioners on this proposal?
I'll ask the sort of, to be obvious question. Why is the LID not considered adequate?
So, an LID is an avenue that could be pursued. It would be incumbent upon the city to establish a local improvement district and have 50% of the property owners within that area sign in favor of that LID before it was initiated by the city. So as Mr. Harper indicated, we typically do look at developments of scale and exact, for lack of a better word, the public improvements at the time of development. So again, I think there are alternatives that could be looked at, and the commission could deliberate that.
What we do in a lot of projects is, at this point, where the applicant's in, you know, and they've got the opportunity to get something from them, when it makes sense to build out the street all at once or the sidewalk all at once, you know, the applicant or in this case, you know, me, grants the city, you know, our vote in favor of doing it whenever it's going to get done. So you don't do it piecemeal, but when it makes sense to do it all at once, if Cambridge is going to get built out in a bigger chunk, you know, then we've already agreed to contribute and build it out. And to me, that made a lot of sense. But like I said, it's not going to kill it either way, but a deferred agreement like that was where we started and what we'd hoped to do.
That's another question. I'll wait.
Oh, you'll wait? Okay. Is it possible to put the overhead view of the property back up there?
Absolutely.
Well, I would have included all of your. That's fine, just like that, yeah. So, Mr. Harper, the one thing that I couldn't get clear on from reading the proposal is, what is access to those two back cottages from outside the property?
It's pedestrian access.
Originating where from public?
Off Cambridge. You can see it right there. It's the, right there.
Right.
So it's going to go, it meets the standards for building separation and for walkway width, and that's the, that's the access going back in.
Okay. That's what I thought, but I wasn't quite certain because there seemed to be some back and forth in the notes.
Oh.
As I looked at that, I personally came down on the recommendation from staff because if that's going to be the access, then we have people walking in the street to go to the access to get to their house.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Which is really what you have all along Cambridge. I mean, there just is no sidewalk.
Because there's no sidewalk.
Right. Exactly.
Quid pro quo.
Well, I mean, I think it's really the comment, the only comment by the neighbors were really that this is, you know, a sleepy little quiet street where people walk their dogs in the middle of the street. And there is, you know, abundant street parking, which makes this interesting for using the climate-friendly initiative to do an owned unit with no parking. Because there is, because of the nature of just that end of Cambridge, those two lots, mine and the one directly to the west, were the last lots in Quiet Village, I guess, as I understand it, were owned by the developer. And so they're kind of weird sized, and they're very long, and they take up that whole block. So, I mean, the good news is, street parking is not going to be the issue that, you know, that people normally fear it will be.
Okay. And then just one other piece for clarification for myself, if you would please. If you're going to sell the units, is the intent or the requirement, gentlemen, you tell me, that this be broken into separate tax lots?
They are. It's five lots, so you'll end up with four.
It is five lots already?
Four, well, no, will be.
Will be.
That's why it's also, the application is also a subdivision. So you'll end up with four cottage lots, which are indivisible or divisible individually, and then you'll end up with a common area, just like a giant subdivision.
Right.
Only it's tiny. That'll be the garden and the fire pit and the barbecue area. And then I included most of the frontage in the common area, rather than chopping it up, because I think there's some real value in having, basically making the homeowner association of the ownership of these four lots contribute to maintaining a real good street presence.
Okay. Understood. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So I don't show that we had any public comment on this, Mike. Is there anything from there?
There was the one written comment that you all received.
There was the one.
And then there was a woman I spoke to today who said she was going to deliver an email prior to the close of business. I hadn't seen it before I left the office, so it's possible that there's another piece of public comment that's been received.
Okay.
At 6:30, I have it received.
All right, then. Well, then I will close the hearing on this, and close the record, and move into deliberations by the commissioners, discussions on aspects of this project. Mr. Herron?
You know, as we move forward with not requiring parking for residential and more dense lots, which we all support and think is important, I think then we have to think about pedestrian traffic a lot more and parking a lot more. So you went from these, most of this neighborhood, single dwelling units, so there's not a lot of street parking being taken up. Well, that's because they park in their driveway or their garage. But when we add three more units to one little tax lot, and this could be duplicated by other properties in the neighborhood, then the parking, the lack of parking becomes exponential. And so if it becomes exponential, we need, we, in my opinion, we need safe ways for people to get down the street or to get to their dwelling unit. And so, because one major change happened, I think this further puts the focus on requiring sidewalk, and you know, I'm okay with not allowing the park row due to the narrowness of the street and all that stuff. But I think it's going to be even more important in the future.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm in agreement in moving the exception to the idea of having the sidewalk, because it's continuous then coming off of Nevada, and Nevada is curb-side sidewalk as well. So it's consistent for the neighborhood.
Yeah, I mean, that's where I was, it was, would have been disingenuous to ask it as a question, but if you are dumping all the cars onto the street, then you have to provide a sidewalk for people to get out onto. It's just, makes sense to me. So I almost feel like it should be part of the, maybe there isn't a way for that to be included in code, but, no. Basically, Eric already said it all. I think it's a necessary part of the development.
Moving all of the cars, moving all of the cars out into the street?
Well, no, just if, if street parking is what's going to take care of access for those buildings, then you've got to provide a sidewalk for people to get out onto. And the walkways of this site connect to the curb.
Right.
So what are you going to do? You're going to get out, land in the landscaping, and then walk to your walkway, and then go into the site? It doesn't make sense. So, yeah.
Any other questions or comments on this? Seeing none, is there a motion? Sure.
I'd like to make a motion to, to take staff's recommendation for approval of this with the exception of the park row sidewalk allowance and requiring a five-foot sidewalk along Cambridge Street.
I have a motion and a second. Let's vote on it and see. Michael?
Commissioner Herron?
Yes.
Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner McCrory?
Yes.
Commissioner Kinkin?
Yes.
Commissioner Herron? Yes. So the staff has pretty much already written up that motion in full language, and we can simply make use of that to flesh out, say, yes, we agree with that.
Yeah. So in this application, findings were presented. I know the commission is familiar with receiving a staff report and a presentation at one meeting and findings at the subsequent meeting, but as the motion is consistent with the findings that were presented, those will be provided for the chair for signature.
Very good. Motion passes. Moving on to the second action for tonight. Vacating right-of-ways. New topic for me. We're going to go ahead and talk about this one, which is the right-of-way adjacent to 391, I hope this is the right number, 391E16AA, tax lot number 9001. So this is adjacent to that. Applicant owner, City of Ashland Public Works, description, planning commission to consider a request to vacate this portion of Fern Street right-of-way north of map 391E16AA, tax lot 9001, near 1109 Fern Street. Make a recommendation to city council. So our motion tonight will be, what is our recommendation going to be to city council? City council has decision-making on this ultimately. Comprehensive plan designation, single-family residential, zoning R1 7.5, map is 391E16AA, and the tax lot is 9001. So before we go into the hearing, ask the commissioners, have you had any ex parte contact or done site visits to this right-of-way space or its environs? Commissioner Kinkin?
I know the space. I haven't talked to anybody about it.
Commissioner Cracking Jane?
I grew up running across that to get to Fern Street, but that was a while ago, and no ex parte contact.
Mr. Ferguson?
No ex parte, and I have not run across that space.
Commissioner Phillips?
No ex parte and no site visit.
All right. And Commissioner Herron?
No ex parte, no site visit.
Okay. Commissioner Nowor?
No ex parte. I did a site visit today to walk across it and understand what it looked like and what the grades were, so that I could better speak to it. So, not aware of any challenges for bias, prejudgment, or personal interest, let's open the public hearing on this. Derek, you presenting for the action that Mr. Flurry put forward?
Okay. So again, as Chair Nowor mentioned, this is right-of-way vacation for Fern Street between Mountain and Elkator, and really before the planning commission is consideration of the vacation request that was initiated by council, and then making a recommendation to council. For staff, typically, the issues with right-of-way vacations are always about street connectivity, maintaining by pedestrian access where appropriate, and providing any necessary utility easements to serve the future development of the area as envisioned in the comp plan. So again, as illustrated here, this section in red, which I guess I could make visible to you, section in red north of 1109 Fern Street is proposed for vacation. The real issue with that, as far as right-of-way fitting within the city system, is that as a city street, the slopes there are in excess of 30% in some places, which is more than double the allowed grade for a city street. So it really has no role in serving street connectivity. So in, in looking at this, staff really consider those issues, that the grades don't allow street improvements. There are existing driveways coming off of that right-of-way, gravel driveways serving the adjacent lots. So staff believe that recommendations to council should include retaining some mutual access easements to support driveway access for those adjacent lots. And then given block lengths in that area with this vacation, our city street standards usually call for block lengths in somewhere 300 to 400 feet and block perimeters in 1200 to 1600 feet. And in this case, we'd be looking at a block length of about 1270 and a block perimeter of about 3100. So we do believe it's necessary to maintain a mid-block pedestrian easement to benefit the future walkability of that neighborhood, realizing with existing grades, it may not be improved to be completely usable immediately, but in the long term, it should be available when the decision is made to provide some connectivity there. And then finally, we're recommending that you include a public utility easement to support future utilities for development of that area or extension of utilities between Mountain and Elkator. So again, really, staff believe you should make a recommendation here of support, and then also requiring those easements for driveways, bike and pedestrian access, and utilities.
That's it?
Yep.
Questions of Derek from the commissioners? I've got a few. All right. One, just in general, not understanding the process completely. What purpose does this serve, since the space already is being utilized in the way that it is and it works fine? What does it serve the city to vacate the right-of-way, and how does that then serve the individuals who own the adjoining properties?
I mean, for the city, it takes up a potential maintenance obligation and liability for if someone were to hurt themselves in that area, or if a tree were to fall. From the surrounding property owners, the methodology is set in state law that you can request vacation of public right-of-way, and it's distributed equally to the adjacent property owners.
But they did not request vacation?
They did.
No, the city is originating this.
So the city is the applicant on this, so it is a city-initiated application. It was at the request of an adjacent property owner to the city manager, who then directed staff to proceed with a city-initiated action. One additional component about vacation of right-of-way is that that property becomes private property as opposed to public by its nature, and as such, then enters the tax rolls. So in terms of answering your question, although the valuation increase of properties for that half the right-of-way width is probably not significant at this point, it does become private taxable property. And that was one point that Mr. Flurry identified when I asked him your question.
Add a little bit more square footage to the tax rolls?
Exactly.
And he did also clarify for me that while it's a council-initiated action, the adjacent property owner is paying for the associated surveying and all of the recording costs. So the vacation's not putting a cost on the city on that end.
So it sounds like we have agreement between the property owners, even though they're not originating this request?
Yes.
Is that true?
Yes.
As far as you know?
I mean, it's, I believe it's one property owner that's paying for those surveying costs to the benefit of all the adjacent properties.
That's what I thought I heard you say, yeah. That's what I thought I heard you say, yeah.
So, from my experience, properties that are next to right-ofways that are not really functional for the city, they become a maintenance nightmare and nobody wants to invest the time and energy it would take to have them be decent adjacent properties. But they're also never going to be a road, so they just become this kind of black hole of energy. And so, vacating the right-ofway gives all those property owners an opportunity to improve their experience.
Yeah, I, I think what I was trying to sort out is that because that small route of Fern Street serves multiple addresses, the ability to improve the street itself or anything, you know, associated with it seems to be problematic unless we already have agreement between the individual property owners who would have brought this effort forward, is what I would have thought.
Well, so they, if they get access easements...
Yeah, the easement's going to be in place for walkability, for driveway access.
Yeah, so the, the function of, will be the same, but the ownership changes. So they actually have control over whatever little bit of space it is. It changes the way that somebody would deal with a piece of property that's next to them. So... And I don't mean to carry on, but it's like...
No, no, please, because like I said, this is new territory for me.
It's like if you have this, um, right-ofway next to your property and it's steep and funky, you're not going to... It just gives you the opportunity to improve it and have it be something you're invested in and it makes sense because it's your property instead of, um, this no man's land that doesn't, it's... I'm not explaining it very well, but I've seen it numerous times and it really does make sense. If the right-ofway is never going to become a public street because it's too steep, then some, giving it to the people that are adjacent to it means that somebody's actually taking care of it and making it functional.
Possibly, yeah, that, that, the...
Well, they don't have to.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's...
But they can and it makes sense and they can't otherwise. I mean, you can get a permit to improve the right-ofway. But it's not yours, if you do it, so.
Okay. Any other questions from commissioners? Commissioner Herron?
Um, what do you think the easement would look like for public access down through there? Is it going to be shared by all four properties? Is it going to go down the middle? Is it going to be dedicated? Or is it just going to say a six-foot easement from north to south is, is going to be required? And so it never gets defined and people could build fences over it?
I think in talking to the one property owner that's paying the surveyor, they're thinking that it's going to be right down the center line. So it'll, the utility easement, the pedestrian easement, the driveway easements would be split equally between property owners on both sides.
Okay.
And it would be platted, not just described.
Okay, thank you.
Derek?
Yes.
Russell has a question.
Sorry, Russell, I was thinking, yeah.
Just real quick, Derek, um, the access, um, that will be available where the Fern Street, is being vacated, will that have access to the 15-foot access between the parcels that exists right now?
I, I, I think that's the intention that, um, and apparently I didn't catch the aerial photo, but yeah, I think it's to support those, um, in, in access either 15 or 20 feet down the center here that would support the driveway that comes off to these properties here as well as to this property and, and making it available to the property north there as well.
Okay, cool, thank you.
If the individual involved was not doing the survey, who would have? If this vacation had taken place and the city was, was leaving?
I mean, the options would be that, that property owners requesting it pay the survey or the city would pay the survey, which, in the past, the city has had a surveyor on staff. We don't anymore. We have a contract through the county surveyor. So, um, probably, more likely than not, would be having the private property owners adjacent pay for surveying.
Okay. With what little I've been able to learn about right-ofways, the city has liability for impairment, uh, as we initiate this process. So if there's impairment and the, and the property owner thinks that somehow the value of their property has been affected, I believe we're on the hook. So that being the case, we have an individual doing the survey to lay out the new lines that we're going to have to, that we're saying we're fine with accepting. And it may all go peachy keen, um, but we don't know and we don't have control of it.
Well, the, I mean, there will be a formal hearing to make the decision before city council with the city attorney present and those adjacent properties would all have the opportunity to come and raise any concerns they have before the council and the city attorney.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, the decision will ultimately take place there. I'm just trying to, to sort it out before we boot it up to council.
Sure. Yeah, and I, I haven't talked to the city attorney about any kind of liability. I hadn't even thought of that and it's never come up before in the, like, relatively few vacations I've seen.
And it may, probably won't be an issue, but I still want to cover it off just in case because if it's in code and we're handling this transaction this way, uh, we are not masters of our own fate here.
So, I have a question. So with regard to the easement to build a walkway, would there be intent on the city's part to build that walkway? And in the meantime, who would be liable for any accidents if people continued to walk across there? It is a very long block, having grown up on Glenwood Drive. I know that.
It was pretty good and that last bit's steep.
I mean, at this point, I don't think there's any plan for a, a walkway installation. It's just getting the easement for that future possibility. And in terms of liability, there's currently some litigation happening. Is it the Oregon Supreme Court? In terms of recreational immunity for, um, use of, of trails. So, that's probably something that's still to be decided.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I, to answer your first question, I don't believe there's a current, um, plan to establish a sidewalk or, uh, pedestrian improvement through that area. The city will be revising its transportation system plan and looking at potential connections and could, at that point, put it on a short-term, midterm, or long-term. But at this point, I don't believe there's any expectation for installation by the city of that pedestrian connection. Further, there's currently fencing and retaining wall that has been installed adjacent to Mountain Street that would likely, uh, need to be removed in order to create access to that portion of the existing Fern Street right-ofway, as you probably experienced walking down it.
I did not see fencing when I walked it. What I did see was, um, stacked fencing stones, cobblestones, whatever they're called, in order to shore up that, uh, difference between the street level and the actual level of, of the dirt. So, putting a pedestrian easement on that, I'm, I'm just looking at it saying, where's the pedestrian easement going to go?
It's kind of like building a sidewalk on Cambridge. It's for future, so that you don't cut off the future potential.
So the easement does not have to designate a, a specific line along the survey that's going to be done again with the property?
Well, there, it would, yeah.
It should.
Yeah, it will, no, it will be a designated easement, but...
But as you get closer to Mountain, that, that line will drop precipitously down to Mountain Street.
And at some point, somebody will do something about that. But if you don't have the easement there, it can never happen.
Yeah.
So...
Yeah, and, and it would be an easement going across private property. And so that is, in terms of the, uh, people encroaching on that property to use the pedestrian easement, they would be within their rights as members of the public to utilize the easement, but they are going across private property and that differs than being on a public right-ofway.
Similar to, um, a lot of TID trail.
Like the one going through my property.
Okay. All right, um, that's all my questions. Anybody else? I believe we have, uh, moving on to the public portion of this session, I believe we have, uh, one person that would like to come up and speak, Mr. Baden? Please come forward. Thank you, Derek.
Could you leave a map up, please? Is that up there? Yeah, this is a great map. My name is, um, my name is Art Baden and I live at 1120 Fern Street. So this is of interest, so just some, some information. Not all of the, um, owners requested this. It was one owner in particular, the developer, who, um, who subdivided, um, what is now 619, 621, 1101, 1107, and turned that into, into four, um, separate properties. There used to be one house there. My concern, um, about this is, um, I used to be a, um, a liability underwriter, so I'm kind of concerned about liability. And, um, I really don't have, I really have questions, um, which I don't know if you are the people to ask or not, but, um, one is, um, and this wouldn't specifically concern me, but over between what's now 1116 and top, tax lot 9001 over there, and Mountain Street, is a precipitous drop-down. And, um, people do sometimes walk through there and, you know, there used to be a big tree there and you'd sort of have to hold on to the roots and sort of get yourself up and climb back down. If this becomes private property, um, and you're requesting that there be an easement for people to walk through that part, um, of, of this, of this, uh, vacated area, then who is liable? If somebody is climbing up from Mountain Streets to cut across and get over, you know, to, um, to El Cator, um, if they hurt themselves over there? Right now, my suspicion is that it's city property. If it's vacated, then it becomes private property. So what is the impact of you requiring this easement on the liability of the people who, um, own that, that part of it? Which doesn't involve me, but it would be the people at 1116 and whoever ends up owning, um, the house that's currently being built over there at 1109, 1107. So that's one question. And I guess it, it extends to if, um, uh, if, if we as a group keep the, keep the road as it is now, which is basically, you know, basically it hasn't been improved, you know, the only improvements that have been done is, you know, I've, um, you know, dropped some gravel down, you know, every once in a while to cover some spots and maybe some other people have. You know, if there's an accident there on that and you've demanded an easement, you know, um, whereas, you know, how is, uh, do we become liable for that? So, um, those are important issues and I don't know what the answers to those are, but, um... Yeah, I think that's, that's what I wanted to ask about.
We pay, uh, city taxes also and I think part of that should include our access in and out of our home to, to El Cator.
Okay.
Okay.
Any questions for Mr. Baden?
Are you the one doing the survey?
No.
Oh, you didn't initiate this?
No, no.
One of the other neighbors did.
The survey was initiated by, um, Mr. Livney, who, um, lives at 619 and who developed that whole four-square piece.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Eric?
Um, can, can I ask somebody that hasn't asked to talk to come up?
If they have not...
I'd like to, well, I'd just like to hear Gil Livney's...
Tell someone to talk.
No, but I can ask him. I, I don't know if I can even ask him.
Yeah, this is not...
Phil, do you want to talk?
This is not a quasi-judicial land use hearing. It is separate from that normal proceedings.
So I could ask and he could say no?
If you want to talk, I can fill out a form for you.
Can I just, can I just say one thing? I'm not, I'm not necessarily against this. There are things about this that I like, okay? I'm just really concerned about how, um, the requirements for the, um, you know, for the pedestrian walk-through, how that impacts, you know, what, what that impact is on liability.
It's a great question.
And I don't know the answer to that.
Okay. And I think we could, if, if this is a dialogue, I would think we could ask the city attorney to, to provide advice to council on that. I think it's a great question.
Okay.
So I was wondering if we could just have Mr. Livney say why he wants, why he decided he wanted to do it? I'd just like to hear his rationale.
If, if Mr. Livney is willing to speak in this not quasi-judicial review of this, he will need to provide...
I'm sorry, that was great.
He will need to provide, Michael, with the, the necessary form to do so. Yes, I'm very sorry, Mr. Baden, I just left you sitting there. She, she's been asked that and then the only request that I have of you is that you fill out the pink form before you leave so that Michael has record.
Okay.
Please come on up.
I, I just walk in the middle of it, but yeah, I'm Gil Livney, um, and I own 619, 111, 19, 109, 107, 1109, 1101. I own, I own that side.
Okay. Commissioner Kincaid apparently has some questions for you?
I'd just like to hear what your rationale or what's driving you to ask for the vacation. I think it'd be good information for us to have, that's all.
Actually, it's came from the city manager, not from me. I did, I did not file for that.
You didn't ask for the vacation to happen?
No, uh, I do want it to happen. Basically, the way it happened is there were some trees that are very dangerous and he asked me to take them down because the city didn't want to spend six, $7,000 on them that were actually in the right-ofway. So I, I offered to take them down and he said that because of the neighborhood basketball court on a public right-ofway and because I'm, I will put the money in, it will, it will basically clear that area. It will, it will make it legal in one way or another. Because right now, the way it is, um, the city didn't want to spend the money, so I went and spent it. And the second thing is, it's not really used as a street. And there was some issue with liability of the city, uh, that he was talking about the fact that there's a basketball court in a pub, public right-ofway. It is not owned by the city, so, uh, for him, and I also wanted to, I mean, I mean, right now, it's, people just took part of it. I mean, we, we are on our side, but the other side, 1116, I'm very happy about the vacation because he wanted to clear it too. Um, I, I think Mr. Art is the only one that, that'd be able to issue with that. I'm not sure exactly what. I just come, came and listened to it, but, um, but the main issue is actually 1120, they have a basketball court on a public right-ofway. But, so, when the manager came and said that I'll spend the money, he would just, anyhow, wanted to vacate it, so it, they just did it, you know? And I, I'm getting the information, the same as everybody else. I don't really... And they're using my, I'm the last person that did, you know, Polaris did the survey, so they were using that as, as an example of what's going on. And for me, regarding the passage of, I mean, um, right-ofway for people to go through, I don't really have an issue with that. I don't think people will walk there. I mean, it's, it's too dangerous. It will be sloping. I don't think that 116 only have an issue with that because if there'll be an issue, it's, it's in the end of it. And basically, if someone tried to go down 10 feet into the, the road, there's no even 15 feet, uh, public right-ofway, it's very dangerous. Right now, there's fences there anyhow. I, I don't see people are using it. The logic about it is like if the city in 20 years will ever wait to use it, they, they want to keep that option. And I, I don't really have here or there, uh, an issue with that. I mean, if you, if the city doesn't want it, it's good. If the city wants it, great. I mean, yeah.
So the question's the same, whether there's a public path easement through there or not, if there's, so it's, that whole question about liability stands for all easements? Like when you're, because you're always crossing somebody else's property when you're in an easement, so it's kind of like, there's got to be standard law for that.
In reality, I don't think, nobody ever will use it, so.
No, I get it.
And it will be a big investment to make it possible, you know, just to go down there.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Livney.
Any questions?
I appreciate you coming up on short notice.
Thank you.
We have not yet closed public comments. Come back up. Excuse me, this is... Yeah, public.
Yeah, I may be a little over-concerned about liability, but it's just my training. I guess the concern that I have is that, I don't have a prob, I wouldn't have a problem with an easement coming off of El Cadeau, obviously, so that the people at 1109 or 1101, obviously, need to be able to get to their, get to their driveways and get to their garages, which are off, which will be off of that road. The only concern really that I have is just people who, is the requirement that the easement for the, for pedestrian easement include going back, going down towards Mountain? That's just kind of a dangerous spot. And I would ask that that maybe be excluded somehow from the pedestrian easement. I don't know if that's possible. Maybe it's something that could be done once the survey is completed.
I would think you'd just have to do away with the pedestrian easement if it wasn't going to be connected from one street to the other.
Right. I mean, I, you know, I certainly wouldn't have a problem walking down the road if there was no pedestrian easement. I mean, you know, that's not the issue. But I'm concerned about that liability of people walking there and hurting themselves. And, you know, we want to protect State Farm as much as we can.
Understood.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Sidewalks are a public easement. So they're everywhere, all over the place. There's a lot of them in the city that aren't being used, when I doubt this one would get used often. But we don't know the future. We don't know 25 years down the road if the city decides to improve the easement. There's already going to be easement for utilities under the same public access easement. So it's not, it shouldn't, I doubt someone's going to be able to build a fence over the easement, you know, that will be restricted. So it seems like a very long block to not have an access forever in the future.
I agree. I'm not so certain about the building of the fence, though, because we have a basketball court on the right-of-way.
Doesn't mean it was right.
Well, we have, we have ways of dealing with encroachment. We just, if we haven't chosen to do something about it, that's the city's choice.
Same thing if they would decide it's super valuable to put a walking path in, because the neighborhoods become more and more dense, and there is more and more foot traffic, and in my opinion, it would be valuable at some point in the future if the city wants to retain it.
You could, in your recommendation to counsel, in addition to asking them to consider liability issues, to look at a consent to future dedication of an easement. So in other words, we have a consent saying if the city ever does improve it, they would provide an easement. But in the interim, people wouldn't have any business walking there in order to get to a fence and a wall that blocks them from going through.
Understood, but I thought the city's position was, given the length of the block, that they wanted the pedestrian accessibility.
Right, but we're not, we were not, at staff level, we were not thinking that's something that was going to happen right away. So essentially, saying until it happens, there wouldn't be an easement there. There would be a consent to a future dedication.
So what comes up for me with that is that then there's potential for legal people to get all excited and try to block it, and spend lots of time and energy not letting it happen if it's not already there.
I want to separate, in my mind, the discussion of the liability from the safety of walking that stretch. So it seems to me that as city-owned property now, the city's liability doesn't change effectively. Now, I'm going to defer to the city's attorney on what the change in risk is, what the risk assessment is relative to liability. But I think separately is the issue of safety, and I want to draw a distinction between the two. And my question then is, how does the, how does this recommendation effectively change the safety? And it seems to me it does not. Those conditions are the same. So it may be that the liability isn't different, and it may be that the safety is really not different.
I think that the people that are, there's an assumption by those landowners, or at least one, that if the land becomes private, that then it's their liability, they become liable if somebody hurt themselves on that public easement, which is not true. So that's the distinction that I wasn't quite making either. So it's still the city's problem. If somebody gets hurt, it's not yours.
Okay, my only question to that, real quick, is to follow off that. What's the source of that comment, and are we certain of its accuracy?
If it's a public access easement, then it's public access easement, and I would assume that the city's response is, assumes the liability.
I think we get the attorney.
Yeah, the attorney needs to say it, but it's like...
Because if I don't own it, I've merely placed an easement over it for use, then I, it's lost on me as to who has that liability, and I...
Yeah, well, I don't know the answer.
I think we beat this one pretty well, but...
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Commissioner.
So...
She was up first.
If it is private property with an easement, can the private property owner build a fence and block it?
No. No. If there's a public pedestrian easement, it would be precluded from building an encroachment across it. This is probably not the best example, but the TID trail is one in which there are areas in which easements have been acquired by the city. You could not build a fence across that. Areas where trail goes through private property without an easement, the property owner is within their rights to block access across that land.
Of which a few have done.
Yes.
Yes. Sorry. It all just circles back to the same stuff. Commissioner Heron.
I think what we're contemplating here is, city council has asked us for a recommendation so that they can take this to a public hearing.
Right.
So the legal advice could be worked out at city council in public meeting. So I think they're asking us for a recommendation. That's all I was getting to.
They are asking us for a recommendation. I've appreciated the conversation back and forth here. In order to get to that recommendation, we have to consider all aspects, even those things not within our capability. So, any other questions, comments on this? We kind of popped into the deliberations discussion section. I have to close the public hearing on this right-of-way, and close the record on it. I don't believe we have any more deliberation that we want to do about it. So do I have a motion for what to do in regards to the right-of-way on Fern Street?
I'm not sure of the language, but I move that we recommend positive attitude, whatever. We recommend that the vacation occur. Is that what we're supposed to do? Yeah?
We're going to make a motion to council, yeah, that they agree with.
That they agree with the vacation with, and note our questions about legal issues. That's all. Because they'll do it anyway. We can't tell them to do that.
Part of the recommendation should be whether or not we're going to include that easement.
Oh, I think that, I would recommend that we move it forward as stated by staff. Yeah. All of it.
I second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second.
May I ask for clarification?
Go ahead.
Or is what we're moving basically what is written here in the box that says staff recommendation? Okay.
Yes, some added, raising a flag of they look at the liability with the city attorney.
Yeah, there's some queasiness.
Right. That doesn't change the motion or the second. That just clarifies it. Thank you very much. Let's go ahead and take a vote on the recommendation that we're going to make to council in regards to the Fern Street right-of-way. Michael.
Commissioner Heron.
Yes.
Commissioner Phillips.
Yes.
Commissioner Perkinsson.
Yes.
Commissioner McCracken-Jane.
Yes.
Commissioner Kinkin.
Yes.
No. So we have a majority of eyes on this, and the recommendation passes. The motion on the recommendation passes. Moving on to the second right-of-way conversation. Subject property: Public right-of-way adjacent to 391E04AD, tax lots 233 and 234. Applicant is City of Ashland again, Public Works Department. Have the planning commission consider or request to vacate a portion of Mountain Meadows Drive right-of-way near Fair Oaks Avenue and make a recommendation to city council. Comprehensive plan designation is HC, Healthcare Services District, zoning HC. MAP adjacent to 391E04AD and 391E04AD. Those are both the same numbers. Again, we may have...
I think there was a duplication of numbers between the two vacation notices, but I thought we caught it going into the packet. It may have slipped through one spot.
It is duplicated in the packet information, but it can just be eliminated. So it's adjacent to 391E04AD, tax lot 233 and 234. So once again, same as before, we don't have decision-making authority for the action. The outcome of the review of this action will be a recommendation to council to accept or deny the vacation, including conditions, if any, that we suggest be imposed. Before we begin, commissioners, have we had any ex parte or site visits on this space? Commissioner Heron.
No ex parte. I have been to the site.
Commissioner Kincair.
I've been out there, but no ex parte.
Commissioner McCracken-Jane.
No ex parte, no site visit.
Commissioner Perkinsson.
No ex parte, no site visit.
And Commissioner Phillips.
No ex parte. I have been to the site.
Commissioner Nowr, no ex parte, no site visits. Not aware of challenges for bias, prejudgment, or personal interest, so let's open up a public hearing on this. And Derek, give us a quick overview.
Okay, this is hopefully less involved just by nature of where it is and what it is. As mentioned, it's a small reserve strip between the Mountain Meadows right-of-way and Golden Aspen, which is labeled as a street, but it's part of this private tax lot. And that reserve strip really consists of a driveway approach where a street was previously planned, but the adjacent property is now fully developed, and a little bit of a parking lot landscape bay. So the idea is to vacate it, and I believe that vacation has some effect on plating of the adjacent development, which you, or the planning commission approved back in 2021. So there is a planning approval called Mountain Hill Estates on the property to the north, and that vacation area is roughly that red box here. So you can see here is that red box here. Development to the north has been approved, and really is just looking to remove that section of driveway and part of the parking area here from city ownership. Again, staff are looking at the same issues in terms of street connectivity, pedestrian and bicycle access, and utility easements. In this case, as currently plotted in that subdivision, there's a 10-foot public utility easement that runs along Mountain Meadows Drive and stops at this area of right-of-way that was a, again, a reserved strip for some future street extension that's not going to happen at this point. And then that 10-foot easement continues to the south. So staff are recommending retaining a public utility easement, so that easement along Mountain Meadows with vacation would just be a continuous 10-foot easement. And then in terms of pedestrian connectivity and bicycles, the development to the north, and I've superimposed that plan onto the aerial photo here, has an approved sidewalk plan that was associated with it. There are sidewalks to the south here with that vacation. Staff believes that that sidewalk should be extended, so there's continuous sidewalks other than through the driveway, obviously, for that corridor of Mountain Meadows Drive. But again, there's no, no likelihood of that street ever needing to be continued, given that the property here is already fully developed, and that the street right-of-way is essentially functioning as a private driveway apron. So staff would just recommend that you make a favorable recommendation to council and ask for sidewalks to be provided, and that continuous public utility easement retained or established.
I have a question.
Got it. Thank you. Commissioner.
So do you then agree with the statement in the letter from Farber Consulting that the approval of the plan, you know, shows the northerly curb return for the proposed vacation, but inadvertently did not show it as a public right-of-way? And that this would be a correction for that?
I think that may be a correction based on the necessary surveying for that property to the north. Yeah.
Yeah, my recollection, a little bit of history on that application, and the building permit application is where this came up. The application was approved. That corner of the property, which is rounded because of this apron, was identified in the planning application as a square corner. When the building permit came in and we were measuring distance from adjacent property lines, it revealed that this was not a straight corner, but that it was a public right-of-way. And as such, in order to build the unit on that property and maintain the setback from that intersection, thank you, Derek, for those examples, a vacation of that right-of-way would be necessary. So the applicant worked with the surveyor, submitted the information to the engineering department, and submitted it to the city council, requesting that they initiate a vacation of that right-of-way.
Thank you.
That answers a question that I had, which is, why was Ashland vacating a section of property which was simply going to go to Ashland? Because it looked to me like it might be all public property to begin with.
Yeah, so I think that this area, as identified as a road right-of-way, was done with the plating of the original road connection with an expectation that it would continue straight through, which if it were to do that now, it'd go right through the clubhouse. So I think at that application, it could have been vacated at that time, but I don't think it was necessary. But in this case, because of that proximity to a proposed building, it came up through the building permit process.
And we did not think we wanted partial ownership of the clubhouse?
Yeah.
Okay. I get it. Anything? Commissioner Phillips, any question? Anybody? All right. Seeing no questions. And come out of that, there is no applicant per se. You were the applicant and the staff to do this. I have no one here that I show looking to speak to this publicly. So seeing nothing else, to Michael. to do this. I have no one here that I show looking to speak to this publicly, so seeing nothing else, to Michael, Gil. Thank you. I'll close the public hearing on this and close the record. Any deliberation beyond what we've already talked about, commissioners? Is there...
Sorry, I actually worked on, it didn't come to me until a few minutes ago, but I actually worked on that project, so it could be perceived that I have a conflict of interest, so I am not going to vote.
Commissioner Kincairn excuses herself from the vote on this for a potential conflict of interest. We still have a quorum. Is there a motion?
I move that we favorably support staff's recommendation and forward this to council.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have any motion and a second, Michael?
Commissioner Heron?
Yes.
Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkinsen?
Yes.
Commissioner McCracken Jane?
Yes.
Refused?
Extant.
Yes. The eyes with one abstention, motion passes. That wraps up all of our agenda business. We do maintain a bullet point on our agenda of open discussion. If there is a topic that someone wanted to bring up tonight, we're not running terribly late. Is there anything that is on someone's mind in regards to the commission that you'd like to table?
How's Haywood doing?
Pardon?
How's Haywood doing?
Haywood is still Haywood.
He's probably going to watch this, so...
Oh, I have no doubt, and I'm going to get at least a sartorial critique if nothing else, so... Hello, Haywood. Excuse me, ex-chair, Haywood Martin. With no other further business to do tonight, I think we've, we've done yeoman's work, particularly on the Fern Street right-of-way. Thank you all, and close up open discussion, and I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Anybody else want to get out before the snow? I need a second.
I'll second.
There we go. Planning Commission, January 9, is adjourned.